I call the February 7th Board meeting open. Today, our invocation will be Commissioner George Wayne Acock.
As fireheads, dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you, amen to blessings. Thank you for giving us the opportunity and responsibility to serve on this board, to make the decisions for the betterment of the citizens of Wayne County and the municipalities. We ask that you guide us in making the right decisions. And also, we ask that you be with our men and women in uniform and our first responders. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance will be Commissioner Acock.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go to the approval of minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? Is there any discussion on the minutes?
I move approval of the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes. Please raise your right hand.
We got to vote.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Excuse me, get the vote. We'll vote on the machine.
This is going to take forever. We're trying new technology today. Bear with us.
All right, do you see the vote?
I vote.
Okay. Mr. Krempeler, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, I have one small change. Under the consent agenda, item number 14, there's a typo. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-4, Resolutions Delegating Refund Authority for Overpayments of Exize Tax to the County Manager pursuant to North Carolina General Statute That should read 105-288-37A1. You would make that change. That's the only adjustment.
All right. You'll have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda adjustments.
Still move.
Takes too long. Well, we showed it has passed, and I'm trying to get it back up there. Show that the agenda passed. Bear with me, I'm so sorry. It showed. I've got it as past. Okay.
All right, and our special presentations. Item number three is a motion to approve the 2023 National School-Based Health Care Awareness Month proclamation. And I ask Ms. Al Summerlin to come up and present that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Acock, Vice Chairman Gurley, Mr. Krempeler, thank you all for having us today. We appreciate the support of the commissioners over the years. We're celebrating 25 years in Wayne County schools this year, so we are excited and thankful for the communities. Let me remove this so you can hear me. Community support over the years. So I'm going to read the proclamation. 2023 National School-Based Health Care Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas all students deserve access to health services and the opportunity to be successful despite disparities or inequities in health care, and school-based health centers provide convenient access to health care and whereas Wayne Initiative for School Health, WISH, is a nonprofit organization that is the result of collaboration between UNC Health Wayne, Wayne County Public Schools, Goldsboro Pediatrics, local city and county government, and various community organizations. And whereas WISH celebrates its 25th anniversary as a school-based health center during the 2022-2023 school year and whereas WISH is strategically located in seven schools: Brogdon Middle, Dillard Middle, Eastern Wayne High School, Goldsboro High, Wayne School of Engineering, Mount Olive Middle, Southern Wayne High, and Wayne Middle High Academy. And whereas WISH is committed to providing comprehensive health services to the students of Wayne County, improving the health of our youth, and addressing the disparities in health care and whereas WISH improves access to physical and mental health and nutrition services for more than 4,100 students. And whereas WISH had more than 9,600 visits during the 2021-2022 school year for physicals, sick visits, follow-up referrals. And whereas WISH continued to provide services throughout the pandemic to decrease the impact of COVID-19 on the physical, mental, and academic issues faced. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim recognition of National School-Based Health Care Awareness Month for the month of February 2023, honoring the work and contributions of our WISH school-based health centers.
All right, thank you, Summerlin.
Remove adoption.
Okay, we have a motion to approve adoption of the National School-Based Health Care. We're faster than we.
Number four is a motion to approve the 2023-2023 Black History Month proclamation. And I think Commissioner Williams is going to read this.
Thank you. The 2023 Black History Month proclamation. Whereas much of Wayne County's honor, strength, and statue can be attributed to the diversity of cultures and traditions that are celebrated by the residents of this great county. And whereas African-Americans have played significant roles in the history of North Carolina's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development while working tirelessly to maintain and promote their culture and history. And whereas, as a result of their determination, hard work, intelligence, and perseverance, African-Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to Wayne County and our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience, which goes back hundreds of years and includes some of the greatest, most advanced, and innovative societies in our history, from which we can all draw inspiration. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the stories and teachings of those who helped build our nation, took a stance against prejudice to build lives of dignity and opportunity, advanced the cause of civil rights, and strengthened families and communities. And whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on past successes and challenges of African-Americans and look to the future to continue to improve society so we live up to the ideas of freedom, equality, and justice. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim February 23rd to be Black History Month in Wayne County, and encourages all citizens to join in honoring the many contributions made by African-Americans throughout the area and to participate in the many education events honoring the contributions of Black Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Do I have a motion to approve the 2023 Black History Month proclamation?
Still move.
I show it on minus seven. I don't know why it translated. Maybe somebody's came in late. But I show it as a unanimous seven to nothing.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to number five. It's with pleasure to recognize the Peggy M. Seeger Center as a Center of Excellence in certification. And I'll ask Paula and Mr. January Brown to come up and give a little speech about the award they have received.
Hi, thank you for having us today. My name is January Brown. I am the Deputy Aging Director at Eastern Carolina Council, Area Agency on Aging, and this is my director, Heather O'Connor. We're here today to present Paula and her staff with the Peggy Seeger Center here in Goldsboro with a Senior Center of Excellence. Over the past five years, her senior center, along with her staff, have provided different resources and services to older adults in Wayne County. They are what we call a senior center without walls. They reach all parts of the county, including Mount Olive, in trying to provide either nutritional programs, exercise programs, and keeping our older adults in a social and engaging atmosphere. They also are active participants in the Wayne County Senior Games and support our caregivers of those caring for our older adults in the county. So on behalf of the Department of Health and Human Services of North Carolina and the Department of Aging and Health Services, we are proud to provide Ms. Paula Edwards and her staff at the Peggy Senior Center. They have successfully completed what we call Scope Certification through the state or Senior Center of Excellence is the highest level that a senior center can receive in the state of North Carolina, and recognizing the efforts that they provide to the community. So Ms. Paula, on behalf of the Area Agency on Aging and all the seniors and caregivers in Wayne County, we appreciate all that your staff and the county, what they do to help support our older adults. And I hope that we have another five years of good success and active participation. And if anybody is very interested in the services they provide, I really encourage you to reach out to the senior center and also promote the senior center because this is a very high type of prestige for them to receive. So thank you very much for having us, and congratulations, Ms. Paula.
Just very quickly, first, it's an honor to serve Wayne County seniors, to be Director of the agency, and thank you for giving me that honor. But I also want to thank the board and the county management team, Mr. Chipp and Ms. Ginger, for all of their support and your support of the senior center that makes it possible. And of course, you never do it alone. I have a great team of staff, as well as volunteers, that make everything happen in order to meet the requirements for Senior Center of Excellence. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Do we? There's a motion.
That hearing was at 9:30, wasn't it? We'll move on to unfinished business. Discussion of adopted hour, operating hours, or changes at the solid waste convenience sites, and our appropriate budget amendment. Let me get to that. So this was an item that was brought back up before us. I have a memo here from clarification of the adopted operating hour changes and the associated impact or cost to operate the additional two and a half hours per week times the number of 13 sites. The previous schedule was Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Wednesday from 1:00 to 6:00. Closed on Sunday, which was a total of 57.5 total hours each week for each site. The adopted schedule on 9/19/2022 changed it from Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., closed on Sunday, which was a total of 60 hours of each site, is now open during the week. I think it was incorrect, I incorrectly stated that it was zero-cost additional. This memo is to correct that statement. Fiscal year '22 to '23, it will take an additional $20,785.91. That includes the hours, the FICA, Medicare, 401K, and the retirement. For fiscal year '23 to '24, it would take a total full year would be $30,880. That includes all FICA, Medicare, 401K, and retirement. On page two of your memorandum is just some additional information about the fund balance at the landfill and the fiscal year audited fund balances and any legislation regarding the use of landfill funds. So I'll open it up for your discussion. And then we have an associated budget amendment attached to it, moving funds from vehicle supplies within their existing budget for '22 for $20,785.91. I would like that for your consideration.
Well, sure. Do we have a motion to approve that since it's within its own budget?
You need a motion to approve changing that, adopting or accepting that budget.
The amount, because we've already, we've already moved, as far as the hours of operation, we've already approved that, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Krempeler.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we have approved the appropriate budget amendment to solidify the funds for the additional cost for the '22-23 budget.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion?
I originally brought this item back to the board. The reason being was because during the actual meeting, and we discussed this, you know, we even voted on the hours as it being no cost. And the hours were changed, you know? And I've asked several times, I added up the hours in front of everybody, I kept trying to bring home the point that it was extra hours. So it's no way you can have people working extra hours and not pay them any extra money. It's just impossible. But during the whole discussion, it was said it was no money, no money. It wasn't going to cost us anything. It wasn't going to cost us anything. And I understand they have their own budget, they have an enterprise fund and different things. But we're adding these hours based off of a few people that called stating that they went out to the landfill on Wednesday morning and it wasn't open, and they have such a big problem with it or whatever. You know what I mean? From a few phone calls. I mean, that's fine. But like I said during the original vote with the hours, there was no price tag on how much that was going to cost. I think for $30,000, we could find a lot more to do with that money out to the landfill or whatever versus, you know, a few complaints about the hours. But if you say the hours are already approved, that's fine. But like I said, we're holding information also, you know? And right after we voted, I received the information of how much it was going to cost. It was $21,000, which was still inaccurate for a year, but you know what I'm saying? That's just ridiculous. You know, we're all intelligent human beings in here, and there's no way that you can add hours to any operation and not add any cost, you know? So I just feel like something was, it didn't set well with me. Something wasn't right about there, you know? And it shouldn't have been done that way. You know, let's be straight up about business. Let's be straight up about things that we want to get past and things we want to do. I'll work with anybody on this board, but don't hide things from me. Don't hide information from me when I ask for it. And that's my biggest problem. And I will be voting no on it just because of that. And because of the cost, it doesn't make sense to do that when we've been operating fine all those years, and it's going to cost us $30,000 just for a few complaints. Thank you.
Any more discussions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question for our director. If he could come up for a moment, please. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
My question to you, since we extended the hours of operations, how's it affected individuals coming here to use the services?
It has been incredibly smooth and positive feedback that we've gotten from it, you know, as far as our department internally, not much difference. But the public, they seemed to like that Wednesday, being able to utilize our sites, you know, for that time period.
If you had to gauge individuals coming here, what would you say? Would you say what would be the difference between the days that you weren't operating?
As far as traffic load? When we track numbers, you know, it's spread out. People have a pattern when they do things. So we are seeing the sites busier that Wednesday morning. We're starting to realize that it is open. People have it. But the traffic flow is picking up. Early on, it was not quite as busy, but it is now.
Okay. Do you think it's been worth it thus far, in your opinion?
Yes, sure. Yeah, because it was confusing to people. We were getting calls complaining about, you know, being closed on Wednesday morning. So it's more, it's more uniform.
You think that we'll be able to make up that revenue?
Well, that revenue is there to absorb that cost, you know, in the household user fees that we collect.
So you don't think at this point, you know, just guessing, like a year from now, you think that we'll be able to eat those costs with revenue opposed to...
Yes, our revenue's solid. Shouldn't see any issues with it.
I have a question for the director also. How long had the hours previously been the way that they were?
We were closed completely on Wednesdays when we reverted back to the landfill itself, going back to six days a week instead of five. We had to adjust in our part-time help to make sure there was a buffer there. That's what we were working on, to make sure we could do the 60 hours a week in the part-time help that we have now. And we were able to work that out.
I'll just ask, how long had it been that you had been doing the, what, one to six?
The Wednesdays?
Yes.
Probably three years.
Three years. So within three years, the public didn't realize that the landfill wasn't open? When you could easily look on the site, you could easily make a phone call, do all of these things?
We were, we would be out there on Wednesdays doing other projects, trying to get caught up when we were closed, just talking to the landfill. We'd have garbage trucks show up. We've been doing it for eight years. Show up on Wednesdays to dump. People get into that habit. They don't stop and think about it. They're working, they feel like everybody should be opening for business.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I wouldn't personally run a company and send a garbage truck out there knowing that you've been closed on Wednesday for three years.
You'd think they would have caught on.
I just, like I said, the thing that I don't like about it is the fact that, you know, when I previously asked you the question, you said it was no cost. And that's the biggest issue. And I don't know why you said it was no cost, you know, having 13 sites adding two hours apiece.
And I do apologize for the confusion, I think, what led into we're not having to, we got the balance in that to cover in addition.
Yes, sir. I mean, I understand that, you know what I mean? But, you know, it's just, I think I asked the question plain. I don't think I was confused, any confusion about it. It's just, you know, when you're adding hours onto your schedule or anybody's schedule, it's just like somebody working overtime. You know that it's going to cost some money, you know what I mean, and whatnot at the end of the day. So that's the biggest problem that I had. You know, whenever you come to us with something, you know, if it's a cost, it's a cost, you know what I mean? I mean, some things cost, and they're worth it, you know what I mean? But, you know, if you can, you know, make sure you have all the numbers together and everything together because, you know, I personally, I will ask questions, you know what I mean? And I'm pretty sure other boards will as well. But like I said, I mean, I hope it's a success. I hope that, you know, we're able to, during those two or four hours, I hope we make that $30,000 a year, that it doesn't, that you still end up with your same budget, your same fund balance, and everything else during the year. But like I said, the reason why I'm just against it is because the way it was done and the way it was handled. I thank you for everything that you do out there.
Mr. Rogers, thank you for coming today. Is the operation been more efficient now since you have more time and everything? Like, I know sometimes, you know, you have to play catch-up when you have a closed day or half-closed day. How is that working out for you?
In reference to these sites being closed on Wednesday?
Yes.
Operation-wise, it didn't affect us. We were, we would go to the sites and pull full garbage loads whenever closed.
Okay.
So as far as operational-wise, you know, really no difference there.
All right. The confusion on your budget, you know, as far as your salaries. Did you have this $30,000 already in your salaries, or did you have to increase that budget on your salaries to make this change?
Yes, we had to increase it.
I think that's where the confusion come in, you know? Your bottom line on your budget, did that have to increase or just that line item?
It will have to increase, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rogers, the only comment I have to make is thank you guys for all you're doing.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I have to say, there was. And the guys, no matter how hard you're working, they greet you with a smile.
Yeah, people just don't realize how much garbage we create.
Oh, yeah.
I know how much I create.
And we take only from Wayne County. You would be amazed.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
And one thing that we need to keep in mind also, the only thing that the county can provide to the citizens of Wayne County is service, whether it's garbage, law enforcement, fire protection, EMS. The only thing that we can provide to them is service. We can't pay their mortgage, we can't buy their groceries, we can't buy their gas, but we can provide service. Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Brandon, thank you for addressing this issue. We've had nothing but positive comments, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move adoption of the budget amendment.
We have a motion.
Do what now? Oh, okay. Oh, you wanted to go there. We had so much discussion, I forgot.
All right. Yes.
All righty, moving on, we'll go back and catch the Appointment Committee before the public hearing.
My apologies, ma'am. I need to announce the votes.
Okay.
Voting no. Okay, there we go. Next chair. Your jeans.
Okay.
Elsie?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, now we're going back to the...
Appointment Committee first.
Madam Chair, we have several appointments this morning. They're all coming to you in the form of a motion.
Thank you.
Motion to appoint Dale Acock Kirby to the Northwestern Wayne Sanitary District, filling the vacancy of the late James Kirby. Motion to appoint Don C. Willis... Motion to appoint Don C. Willis and Melissa Reese to the Commissioners Council for Older Adults. And motion to appoint Ms. Shirley Edwards to the Goldsboro Planning Commission. All those come to you in the form of a motion.
We need to do this individually. Um, we have a motion. Can I have a motion for Northern Wayne Sanitary District for Mr.?
So move.
All right, we have a motion.
And, uh, well, we had a motion. I need to make a comment also. This is coming from a recommendation from the Northwest Sanitary District.
Okay. We're ready to vote?
Yes. All right.
Next one?
All right, Commissioner for Older Adults, we have two names, Mr. Don Willis and Melissa Reese.
Let me out of here.
Orson, make the motion.
Did it pop back up? Don't worry. Did it pop back up?
Yes.
It did, okay.
All right.
All right, hold on just a moment. Did you vote no on that as well?
No.
Did not.
No, I didn't vote no.
We have a re-vote on that?
Yes, sir.
All right.
We're showing everyone voted yes on that. Is that correct?
There you go, okay.
The next recommendation is for the Goldsboro Planning Board. We have Ms. Shirley Edwards. Any discussion?
You marked them all as yes, didn't you? Excuse me, we're going to uncheck this. Because it's the original.
We'll vote again?
We'll vote again?
We're going, we're going to vote again.
Because we have to do each of these individually, my apologies. So the, just to recap, the first Appointment Committee vote that we had was six to one with Commissioner Williams voting against.
Correct.
Northwestern. Then on the second vote for the Committee Council, or Commissioners Council for Older Adults, that was unanimous seven to nothing. Now we're voting on the Goldsboro Planning Commission, if we can get this thing to work right.
Has everybody voted for that one?
Twice, yeah.
And I'm showing that as six to one. Again, my apologies, we're learning here. That is it. Now we can go to our public hearing, is that correct, sir?
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to our public hearing to receive public comments on a proposed amendment to the Wayne County zoning map by establishing the community shop, shopping and CS zoning district to a .25 acre unzoned property located in Stony Creek Township at North Gold Drive and US Bypass East, 70 East, just west of Hair Road Overpass. The Wayne County Tax Office, parcel number 3620099044. The Board of Commissioners may choose to act on the matter following the public hearing. Madam Chair.
Okay.
You'll open the public hearing?
Yes. We're going, do we have a motion open the public hearing?
Here's the motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. All right, this is a public hearing for, um, a request to establish a zoning area or a property to be zoned in Wayne County. The request is for a quarter acre, as mentioned, on North Gold Drive. This is actually just north of 70 Bypass, right, is actually right there at Hair Road, where Hair Road crosses over. There's a substation that sits right there along 70 Bypass. It's between Hair Road and the substation. But they are requesting community shopping zoning. Nearby zoning includes the community shopping. There is community shopping across 70 Bypass and to the west and further to the east as well. Typically along the bypass, if property was vacant, it was established as community shopping. So it would be consistent in with what's currently located in the area and along the bypass. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Oh, and we did, just to mention, we did post the property with a signed advertising hearing. And we did mail notices to all the adjacent property owners as well. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Was there any opposition after you mailed out notice?
I have not heard of any.
Any further discussion, questions? Does anybody in the audience have any questions?
Did we have any speakers that wanted to speak in the public hearing? I did not. I put a public comment sheet out, but I missed this one. My apologies. No ma'am, so you can now close it?
Okay.
If there's no discussion?
It didn't?
He held his hand back in the back.
Did you have any comments, sir?
Oh, none on that.
Okay. Oh, okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure. Need a motion?
No, sir, you just, I mean, no ma'am, you just closed the public hearing.
Close.
And now you can, um, discuss it?
All right, we have any discussions?
You'll make the motion? Oh, yes. The, uh, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, proposed amendment to Wayne County's zoning map, as discussed earlier.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gurley.
We're about to have opportunity to vote. Ew, I don't know.
Did it pop up?
Yes. I thought you wanted my vote.
I don't know, I don't care. I just wanted to make sure we had a vote.
Okay.
Just see something new.
It's not, it's not our line.
Motion passed unanimously.
Barry, I have a question for you. Madam Chair, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Previously reviewed that.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Doctor to approve the consent agenda that we discussed in the briefing.
I just have one question, uh, because I wasn't here for the briefing. The resolution adopting the 46th Amendment to the Position Classification and Pay Plan for Wayne County. Can you just give me some quick detail on that if you don't mind?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We're just changing the title of the IT project management position to just reflect IT Director.
Okay.
That's all that is. No changes to the grade or anything.
Okay, all right.
I think we're on the public comment section.
Hold on.
We gotta have a vote.
Okay, I thought we already voted.
We had to wait for him to?
Okay.
It popped up on mine, I voted.
Yeah, I did too. He was waiting for clarification.
We're good.
We had to wait on one, so we are good.
I got you.
Moving on to the public comment period.
All right, and we do have three individuals that have signed up to speak. The first, and I've already apologized, we have her name misspelled in here, uh, but Jerlee Davis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The town of Goldsboro is a great place to live, a very small-town feel. Downtown in recent years had had a surge in new developments that had brought some people into the area, but was still lacking in bringing young people. The younger generation, younger population has school-related activities that those are limited to certain times of the year and at the end, at the end, the earlier time in the evening. A need for recreation for young people is very apparent. The lack of activities for young people can create, increase boredom and sometimes crime. Adding in recreation for young people can also bring more attraction to our area. The addition of recreation activities can provide a safe, secure environment for young people to be during the evenings, especially the weekends. Young people being involved can also help improve the social, emotional skills by providing an opportunity to interact and socialize with their peers. This can also boost their self-confidence, their esteem by placing them in more social environments that allow them to open up and be more comfortable and safe. I took it upon myself to speak with leaders in the community who work with young people, population. They had a survey, the students that, and they all agree that bringing something for young people and adults will be beneficial. Young people spoke about their desire to see something for them to engage outside for their normal extra activities, events. Other communities have recreational activities such as Skyzone, David Buster, go-karts inside and outside outdoors, golf courses and more child-friendly bowling alleys. Not only will this help the present population, but for generations to come. Another benefit will be that a lot of these recreational spaces and environments can be used by other ages as well. Investing in young people is investing in our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have, and I apologize if I don't say this correctly, Deronte Lee.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Deronte Lee. I am a 38-year resident of Wayne County, North Carolina. Born right here in Goldsboro and raised up in Duckville as well. Currently, I am a football coach at Sulli Wayne High School. I coach the wide receivers. And I truly love and have a deep passion for working with kids as well as young adults. I volunteer twice a month at the local soup kitchen on James Street, right here in Wayne County, North Carolina. I have a nonprofit organization named after me, Deronte T. Lee Achievement Academy. And my mission goal is to help educate and teach young men and women the necessary tools to be great achievers and to be self-sufficient in life. I have over half a decade experience in farming. I love to see people eating healthy and learning about different fruits and vegetables that can easily be grown. We are looking for some available land that's around Wayne County to use for local farming as well as a community garden. Our main focus is to see people get healthy and to provide learning opportunities for the youth to learn about farming and agricultural techniques. Whatever property we are allowed to use, we will keep it maintained as well as nearby properties with keeping the grass cut as well as picking up any trash or debris that's around.
First of all, I want to thank you for what you're trying to do, um, with the community, with the kids. Secondly, I saw you last night at the city council meeting and I saw that they advised you to come to the county. I didn't think that was fair because the city does have a lot of lots that they could, that you could probably have access to. But, um, I don't know at this point which direction we could lead you. Um, any suggestions our county managers?
If you'll just make an appointment with me, we can arrange, we have land available for that type of stuff. No problem. So if you'll just get up with me later at another time and we can meet and I can show you what we have.
Okay.
Yeah. Sound good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I'll tell you, I'll make sure I get you his information if you need it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, our county managers for being quick on your feet like that.
No problem. Appreciate it.
Don't clean me up.
All right, and we have Mr. Banks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't want to repeat what he just said, but we work together. Uh, this is my business partner, so I can say. We can just get in contact.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Done deal. Much easier with after the city, right?
Okay, is that all public comments? Okay, uh, county managers report, I don't have much. I just remind the Fremont School Building, uh, Working Group for, we have a meeting at 12 o'clock today at the Fremont School Site. I think lunch will be there. Uh, you'll get to see the progress on that Fremont Elementary School. Also, I will, uh, let everybody know we're scheduling a department managers meeting next Thursday for another round of information on our bi-weekly payroll that we're moving to. So that's all I have from the county manager. Thank you.
Mr. County Manager, please make sure you reach out to any supervisor that may be reluctant to.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah.
Yes, sir.
We're ready for the Board of Commissioners' committee reports. Oh, with Mr. Gurley.
Yes, ma'am, uh, on the 19th, I had the opportunity to speak on your behalf to the, at the Community College.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am, ribbon cutting, uh, the, uh, the college is, uh, is a vital part of our, uh, county and workforce. Uh, I made a comment at the end that I look at the Wayne Community College as I do our 911 Center. If you need fire law enforcement or EMS, you call the 911. If they don't do their job, you don't get any help. Same regards to the Community College. If they don't produce the workforce that we need, desperately need in our industries in Wayne County, then, uh, we're kind of lacking behind. Also, I want to, uh, uh, reiterate the, uh, the need for volunteers, um, in our fire service. Volunteer fire service in Wayne County, uh, we are a strong organization, uh, but we're just like anybody else. We need, uh, we need, uh, new people and, uh, we can use them in any way. It's not just dragging hoes and, uh, uh, wearing air packs. And we have people that we need for administrative roles, uh, directing traffic, truck drivers, all of the above. And we take our wages, uh, they're, uh, from 16 to 18, uh, junior firemen, uh, 18 to 80. Or, let me back up, 18 to 100. I don't leave anybody out, so, uh, but they are, we are, we are looking for volunteers. And that's, and I've said on many occasions, it's the hardest thing that you'll ever love to do. So that's all I have is.
Mr. Doctor?
Probably going to jump the gun and steal somebody's thunder, but I feel like I do need to give a big shout-out. You know, Wayne County has gotten hidden gems, and here's one. Flowers Timber. Flowers Timber was recently, in fact, uh, last week, was, uh, given the award by Commissioner Steve Chalkser and recognized them as the agricultural exporter of the year. Now think about that a minute. In all of North Carolina, a little company here and family-owned company here in Wayne County is the agriculture. is the Agricultural Exporter of the Year. We're gonna honor them hopefully at our next meeting, but I wanted to just, just say a real attaboy to Flowers Timber. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you so much. First off, I was honored today to read the Black History Proclamation. It really touched my spirit, you know, when you think about, you know, all the great things that Black Americans have done for this country and in Wayne County. Just a lot of great people. I also want to remind everybody, we're gonna be, the board has decided we're gonna have our summer employment program again this year. And so be prepared to allow, you know, the kids in the community to apply for those jobs. I don't know what the date will be, but just, just look on our page, it'll be posted. Also, I want to thank our county manager for thinking quickly in regard to someone that's wanting to do something in our community. You know, it's always a lot of red tape when it comes to local government and that cleared red tape. And I greatly appreciate that. Also, there's, you know, when we think about individuals in our community, small businesses, Gratties, barbecue, they were just known for, by National Geographic for being a great destination. They're right here in Dudley, North Carolina. A great husband and wife, great food, great personalities. So make sure you go and see them, see the hidden gem, they're there. And that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Foster?
Um, no comment.
Okay, Mr. Freeman?
Yes, I want to thank the community of Gratham. They had the Gratham Get Down this past Saturday at the, at the, at the Mike's. It was a big success. Also, Manolov is having a chili cook-off this coming Saturday from 11 to 4. So if anyone can get out there, please do so and support the community. And also I want to thank my fellow commissioners for a very, what I consider a very successful gold, gold sitting session we had this past Friday, this past Thursday.
That's it, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Coe?
Uh, I don't have much today. I'd like to follow up on what Commissioner Williams said about Grattie's barbecue. I had the pleasure of serving with Mr. Grattie on the planning board many, many years ago. And that is one fine individual. And he's, he's, he's been a great asset in a lot of things he's had doing in Wayne County. And a follow-up on what Commissioner Gurley said about volunteering for the local fire department. It's really getting to be a real challenge. Johnson County, Nash County, I think it was Runford County, might have been Uhanover, has had to suspend the contracts on four fire, volunteer fire departments because they could not provide the service and the main objective. The reason was, is because of manholes. And, and it's, you know, it's, it's a real concern because, you know, we got to encourage volunteers. And this is a growing, growing county. And volunteer fire service in Wayne County has been currently a close-knit community thing, but our communities are growing and we've got to reach out to the newcomers because they're out there, we just got to reach out to them. But this, this in the future is gonna be a very serious problem.
Thank you.
Like Commissioner Acock and Commissioner Gurley stated, I've been to three different fire departments this past month. I spoke at the Lane Tree banquet and felt very honored to do that. It's like I told them, I never wore turnout gear or rode a fire truck, but it was an honor to be there. And to see the dedication that these families, because it's all the families, it's not just the firemen, who give their time and dedication to this, this service, you know, for our county, which Commissioner Acock has said a lot of times that would cost the county a lot of money if we had to pay for this kind of service. And I want to extend my thank you also for these volunteers. And we do need to be very active in encouraging young people to get involved because most of the ones that I go to are older ones like me that are trying to keep this going. And so if you know anybody that wants to join, please encourage them. You know, it's a good thing to do and the hours they put in is just unbelievable. Also went to Raleigh on the 25th and 26th to a class on government, which was very interesting. Chamber meetings. And I also want to congratulate the chamber on their 125th year anniversary. That was a big event at the firehouse. Commissioner Acock and I went. And that's all I have. But one more thing, on the HUNO, the area that Commissioner Acock and I live in, they're getting ready to have their Heritage Day anniversary in September. So hopefully everybody put that on their calendar. We're gonna start planning for that. And that's always a big event, so come out to the HUNO in September. You don't know the date, do you, Wayne? I think it's September 23rd.
I don't remember, we discussed it last night, but I can't remember on any occasion.
That's all I have.
Okay. One thing, on the, on the website for the organization, for the Wayne County Fire Association, Fire Fighters Association, if you want to, it's joindwayne.org. J-O-I-N-W-A-N-E dot org. That's the way and it actually, you put your address in it, it'll tell you exactly which fire department you need to go to.
Is there any further discussions?
Nothing.
Our adjourned.
Mr. Freeman? Quiet, sir.
We ain't got to vote on that, right?
I could do that all.